Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and we welcome you to the October meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. I will officially call our meeting to order, and again, welcome each one of you here tonight for your participation in our meeting as we conduct the business of county government for the citizens of Randolph County. And thank all of you again for your interest in what goes on here. I do want to say, I guess those of you that do Facebook know that it's down, I understand, worldwide, so our meeting tonight will not be streamed on Facebook, but it is streamed live on YouTube. So for those that might be watching us on YouTube, we welcome you to our meeting as well tonight. And we do have a lengthy agenda, and some matters again that are very pertinent to the future and the business of Randolph County, and we'll go through that as fast as we can. I will say that this agenda does not include a discussion or any action on the removal of the Confederate statue. That is not on this agenda. I know some of you probably are here for the public comment, but that is not, is not an agenda item for us tonight. So this board will not be taking any action on that. And I plan to have a few more comments to say about that as we go through the process tonight. So again, welcome. We're glad to have Reverend Michael Trogdon with us tonight again, who's going to deliver our invocation. And after that, the 4-Hers are going to do our pledge of allegiance. So we will have, we will have Reverend Trogdon to come for our invocation, and then you bring the 4-Hers up, and we'll do our pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we thank you for all of your goodness. God, we magnify you for your mercies and for your grace. Lord, you said that we can come boldly to the throne of grace, to obtain mercy, and to find grace to help us in time of need. You said that you are a refuge, that you're our strength, that you're a very present help in trouble. Father, we thank you for Randolph County. We thank you for Ashboro. Thank you, Lord God, for the privilege of being residents of this fine community. And God, we thank you today that your kingdom is over every other kingdom. So we say, God, let your kingdom come. Let your will be done in Randolph County as it is in heaven. We thank you, Lord, for those that sit on the other side of this desk. We thank you, Lord, that you have graced them with the privilege to serve our community. We pray, God, tonight for your wisdom. We pray, God, for your discretion. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, God, for the welfare of the whole of our community. So be in this place with us tonight. Grant us your grace. Grant us your insight. God, you are a God of equity. You are a God of justice. So we thank you, Lord, that you are the God of Randolph County. So God bless this meeting tonight, we ask, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, my friend. All right, the 4-Hers, please come forward. Thank you. Thank you. House chairman. Okay, yes. Go right here.
So now for the 4-H. I pledge my penitentiary allegiance, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and our world.
This week is National 4-H Week across the country. The theme, Find Your Spark, is perfect because there is something for everyone in 4-H. It is easy to find a spark that could ignite into something bigger such as a career. From agriculture to steam to healthy living and public speaking, shooting sports and more, 4-H has it all. Randolph County 4-H reaches over 16,000 youth every year, ages fifteen, five to eighteen in Randolph County. Every year through school enrichment programs, community clubs, summer programs, and special interest projects. Since the start of the pandemic, Randolph County 4-H has taken the 4-H motto to make the best better by adapting the way we offer programs. We continue to offer excellent research-based programs, just virtually or through kits. Some examples include our school enrichment Google Meets, youth cooking videos, 4-H On The Go library programs, bike safety programs, fire safety videos, summer kits, youth gardening kits, our virtual poultry show, and more. We are so appreciative of the support the Board of Commissioners provide to Randolph County every year. Thank you. So now we have three 4-Hers that just want to talk a minute about the impact that 4-H has had on their lives. So we'll start with our youngest one, and then we will go to our 4-H alumni. So Ryland Wright.
My name is Ryland Wright, and I'm ten years old, and I'm part of the Country Kids 4-H Club. The reason why I love 4-H is because we can go on activities like going to nursing homes and play bingo, do service projects, and other fun outings. And the other reasons why I like 4-H is because there's competitions, like project competitions, cow showing, and presentations. I've only been to one competition, but I can't wait to do more in the future. 4-H has helped me have lots of fun and is very helpful me with my experience. Thank you.
Do you have some cows?
Yeah.
How many do you have?
Hmm. About three hundred and fifty?
You have a pet? Good job.
What?
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good.
My name is Caleb Sharon. I'm in the sixth grade. I enjoy participating in Randolph County 4-H. Just before the pandemic last year, I got baby chicks from the chick chain. During the lockdown, my family and I built a big coop with a feed room. Today, I sell eggs from those chickens. I'm saving money for college. Go Wolf Pack! Last year, I showed one of my favorite chickens named Lucy at the poultry show. It was virtual show, and I won first place, so now I have an award-winning chicken. This past year, I joined the Super Sharp Shooting Stars 4-H Club. I practiced really hard all year. In September, I participated in the Central Region Shooting Tournament. I qualified to represent Randolph County in the junior level archery and rifle at the state competition. This Saturday, Randolph County 4-H Super Sharp Shooting Stars Club will join other 4-H shooting clubs around the state to compete in North Carolina shooting competition. Wish me and my team luck. Thank you for supporting Randolph County 4-H.
All right. Now where do you go to school?
I'm homeschooled.
All right.
I have a pretty good teacher.
Thank you.[610.16][610.16](Laughter)
Hi there. My name's Laura Leglue, and I'm a former member of Randolph County 4-H and a current member of the North Carolina 4-H Honor Club. For the past eight years of my life, 4-H has been one of the largest parts of it, and I've had many amazing opportunities, like getting to show beef heifers and help younger showmen with their project animals, speaking to North Carolina state legislators, and speaking to y'all about issues facing youth in 4-H today, and the opportunity to participate in statewide community service projects that have helped make our world a better place. Before 4-H, I was a shy little kid. I wouldn't talk to anybody, much less speak in front of the Randolph County Commissioners' meeting, but here I am today, you know, 4-H and everything would have me do that, so I'm very grateful for all the personal development and the career development that 4-H has given me. I'm currently serving as the Randolph County Digital Alliance Ambassador, and that wouldn't have been possible without 4-H because I wouldn't have had the necessary skills to do so. So I'm very grateful for this amazing program, and I'm sad to be aging out of it, but I'm sure it will help many of these young men right here be amazing people too. So, thank y'all.
They need, they need.[686.01][686.01](Applause) They need, they need leaders like you. You've been coming before us for a few years now. I hope there's no such thing as an age limit, and you continue, you continue to work, like you said, for these youngsters that are coming through the program. I do have, if you want to, I have a resolution that I would like to read into our minutes tonight from our board. 4-H Week in Randolph County. Whereas 4-H youth across the nation are leading efforts to solve problems in their communities and make a difference for their futures, and whereas 4-H is the largest youth development organization in North Carolina and the largest in the nation with over six million participants, and whereas 4-H in North Carolina claims 260,000 youth members and 13,000 volunteers, while Randolph County's 4-H program numbers more than 16,000 members and more than 100 volunteers. And whereas 4-H is part of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension System of NC State University and North Carolina A&amp;T State University, is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences in 4-H's mission mandates of science, engineering, and technology, healthy living, and citizenship. And whereas 4-H has connected youth in their communities with the innovative research and resources from our nation's 112 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 118 years. Now therefore, the Randolph County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October the third through the ninth as National 4-H Week in Randolph County. We urge the people of this county to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program that enhances our young people's interest in their futures as part of Randolph County 4-H youth development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and our state university system. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second, Hope?
Yes, sir.
Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it's approved, and thank you all again for your participation tonight. One more.[831.12][831.12](Applause) Okay, we have a, we do have another special recognition tonight, a retiree from our Sheriff's Department, Tracy Williams. Greg, Sheriff Seabolt is going to come and do the honors.
I am very happy to be able to stand up here and give praise to this, this lady, her family. Her husband, as you know, has got thirty years plus in public service, and this is a family that's done so much for Randolph County. A little bit about Tracy. Sergeant Williams began her career, law enforcement career, as a telecommunications with the Ashboro Police Department on September twentieth, nineteen ninety-one. In August of nineteen ninety-three, she completed basic law enforcement training. In February of nineteen ninety-four, she transferred to the sheriff's office as a desk officer. Williams transferred to the Civil Division as a deputy sheriff in February of nineteen ninety-five. In July of nineteen ninety-five, she transferred to Criminal Investigations and was promoted to detective. In March of nineteen ninety-seven, she was transferred to nine eleven. In August of nineteen ninety-eight, Williams was rehired part-time as a deputy sheriff for the school-based programs as a DARE instructor. She became a full-time deputy in September of nineteen ninety-nine, and there back to the SRO Division as a full-time DARE instructor in March of two thousand. Williams was promoted to Senior Patrol for the DARE program in October of two thousand and one to Corporal of the DARE program in July of two thousand and two. She became, became a sergeant in the school-based programs, SRO Division, in January of two thousand and nine, and transferred back to the DARE instruction in December of two thousand and nine. She loved DARE, I think, and she worked very well with kids. In December twenty fourteen, she transferred to the Criminal Investigations Unit as a sergeant. In March of twenty sixteen, she was assigned to the school-based programs as a supervisor. In December twenty eighteen, returned to the Criminal Investigations as a detective sergeant, where she is an incredible investigator, and hopefully, we, we won't miss her too bad. She's going to stay on with us in a active status for a while until Jody pulls her away and takes her hunting out west. But she is a, a very hard worker. She's well-liked within the whole department, and I've heard Chris Manas, Captain Manas, say, "If, if Tracy can't figure it out, I don't think anyone can." So congratulations, Tracy. You've been definitely an asset to, to the sheriff's office, and your husband to Randolph County. You've both been tremendous.
Thank you.
And I really feel honored to have you and to be up here, giving this to you.
Thank you.
If there's anything I can ever do for you or the department, please let us know.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[1051.83][1051.83](Applause)
Now, Tracy, for all of that, you get a clock.[1064.08][1064.08](Laughter) No, seriously, we, we've been recognizing several from the Sheriff's Department this summer for retirees who have a lot of years of service to the citizens of this county. Your legacy and your work with DARE and the SRO with our young people will follow along after we're all gone. And I appreciate you so much, and I know the families and the people in the school and those kids appreciate it very much too. So on our board, in grateful appreciation to Tracy Williams, in recognition of twenty-eight years of service, October the fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, Randolph County Board of Commissioners. God bless you and your family. (Applause) Congratulations, Tracy. Thank you, Tracy, family, and thank you, Sheriff, for participating. All right, it's time now for our public comment period, and as I mentioned earlier, this is not an agenda item. At some time in the future, there might be an agenda item that would create a public hearing, but for tonight, we do have a large group. I'm going to ask our attorney to please read the rules, and we're going to follow that as closely as we can tonight, so everybody has a chance to be heard, and then we can move on with our agenda. So with that, Adam Clark, who do we have? Wait.
Mr. Chairman, the rules of the procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to fifteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name, both orally and in writing, before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Jane Gant.
Let me say this. If, if necessary, we, we can extend the fifteen minutes, but we, we want to work with the three-minute limit per speaker. So thank you. Who's, who's first?
Jane Gant.
Jane Gant.
Well, Ms. Gant, while you're coming forward, as each speaker is, is presenting, what I'll do is I'll just, with each speaker, I'll tell them when they have one minute remaining. Thank you, ma'am.
Again, I am Jane Gant. I appreciate you allowing me to speak to you tonight. I appreciate the opportunity that, that you guys are working so hard on mega sites. We acknowledge that. We hope that, that will be very successful. But I do want to speak to you about a personal matter. I am a member of the NAACP, and what I want to speak to you about is knowledge. I grew up here in Randolph County. I spent many years right in front of this courthouse because my aunt was a maid to Loya Spence. Some of you probably know the Spence who owned Loya's Row here. I spent many days playing around that monument. I did not know the history of the monument. When I think back now, and I think in terms of my own children, my grandchildren, and I think of my aunt who was a maid, a very proud progressive woman, would she have allowed me to play on that monument if she knew the true meaning of it? Would my parents have allowed me? And the reason I come before you tonight, because I don't want to come to you with fake information. I want to talk about truth that has been presented to most of you. The history of that monument, the Confederacy that placed that monument there, the amount of slave children that were sold, this is not fake. You can find it in your library. You can find it in the register of deed. You find it in your newspaper. This is documented information that you have been given that warrants that monument needs to go. My philosophy is simply this: when you know better, each of you should do better. Those are my comments. Thank you.[1362.33][1362.33](Applause)
Nancy Sharpless.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Nancy Sharpless. I live in the northeastern part of the county with my husband. I am here to beseech you to remove the statue commemorating Confederate soldiers, which currently stands on county government property in the public plaza in front of this historic courthouse, the courthouse that we all had entered this evening to participate in or observe the governance of our county. That statue was placed in front of this courthouse, as were hundreds in front of courthouses across the nation, by the United Daughters of the Confederacy during the Jim Crow era, decades after the Civil War. These statues were placed as part of a huge effort during the Jim Crow era by the United Daughters of the Confederacy to falsely rewrite history, to promote white supremacy, and to intimidate black people. In their early years, the United Daughters of the Confederacy engaged in benevolence for Confederate veterans and their families, but by the nineteen tens, their primary efforts changed focus. They successfully promoted and disseminated through textbooks and other means the falsehood that secession and therefore the Civil War were not about slavery. They were so successful in spreading and perpetuating this myth that to this day, many Americans believe that the Civil War was not about slavery. But these teachings are propaganda, false history rewritten and promoted by the national organization, United Daughters of the Confederacy, in the first half of the twentieth century. This same organization even erected monuments specifically honoring the KKK during the Jim Crow era. The secession was about slavery. You only did a little look at the Constitution of the Confederacy, which specifically states, and I quote, "No bill of tender, ex post facto law, or law denying or impairing the right of property in Negro slaves shall be passed," end quote. Several Confederate states in their declarations of causes for secession clearly state that the secession was about causes, was about slavery. As an example, the Mississippi Articles of Secession state, quote, "Our position is thoroughly identified with the institution of slavery," end quote. So let's stop pretending that the Confederacy didn't believe in or inactively promote, in some cases, seek to expand, slavery. And let's not pretend that that statue represents the history of Randolph County relating to the Civil War. It does not represent the history of Randolph County related to the Civil War. The citizens of Randolph County voted to not secede. To some people, monuments to veterans of the Confederacy may be about honoring their ancestors, and that's fine. All kinds of memorials to people's ancestors with all kinds of inscriptions are appropriately placed in cemeteries or in private property. If someone wants to erect a monument in the cemetery or on their private property in honor of their Confederate ancestors, I have no objection, but the government of this county should not be displaying monuments that honor slavery, which is a crime in America, and in public space that everyone doing business with the government has to pass. The current placement of that monument, a monument erected by an organization dedicated to disseminating propaganda that glorifies slavery and honors racism, was intended to intimidate and dehumanize black people. The black citizens of this county should not be subjected to intimidation by their government in the public square when engaging with their government. That statue needs to be moved from the public square. Thank you.[1572.63][1572.63](Applause)
Dwayne Roberts.
We're only going to have our fifteen minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I trust, well, you know who I am. Dwayne Roberts, past commander of the Military Order of Stars and Bars. That's chapter sixty-seven, Garnet Pettigrew, out of, we meet in Brown Summit. I'm also commander of Randolph County Sons of Confederate Veterans, camp number nineteen sixty-six. I trust all of you got my email from the September meeting? Okay, all right, thank you. In the winter of sixty-five, our people were hungry and barely alive. And I got this from the front page of the Courier from Thursday, April twenty-ninth, nineteen oh nine. It's a list of fifty-four people that donated a good sum of money to have this memorial erected out here. There are a couple of businesses that donated some money, and there were many more people that gave money because of the sale of cakes and pies, and, but one of these ancestors was one of my ancestors, and it was Uriah Pressnell, and he donated twenty dollars. Uriah was a very prominent individual in Randolph County, in Ashboro. He lived in Ula and had about seven hundred acres of land here. He's also responsible for the Pressnell Street here in Ashboro also.
Five of my Confederate ancestors started four Methodist churches here in Randolph County.
Flag Springs Methodist Church, First Methodist Church, Cedar Falls Methodist Church, and New Hope Methodist Church. All of them gave, gave the land and were members of the elders and such with the churches.
Mr. Roberts, one minute.
Okay, thank you. You've already been given false information about that memorial out there because they've already heard it called the Civil War, and we all know that it was not a civil war. So I want you to consider that. It was a war of northern aggression, and I thank you for your time. Okay, thank you. I apologize that I may have to leave. I need to be at work at seven o'clock. that gave money because of the sale of cakes and pies, and, but, one of these ancestors was one of my ancestors, and it was Uriah Pressnell, and he donated $20. Uriah was a very prominent individual in Randolph County in Ashboro. He lived in Ula and had about 700 acres of land here. He's also responsible for the Pressnell Street here in Ashboro also. Five of my Confederate ancestors started four Methodist churches here in Randolph County: Flag Springs Methodist Church, First Methodist Church, Cedar Falls Methodist Church, and New Hope Methodist Church. All of them gave the land and were members of the elders and such with the churches.
Mr. Roberts, one minute.
Okay, thank you. You've already been given false information about that memorial out there because they've already heard it called the Civil War, and we all know that it was not a Civil War. So I want you to consider that. It was a war of northern aggression, and I thank you for your time. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I apologize that I may have to leave. I need to be at work at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
William Dula, 1320 Randolph Tabernacle Road, Ashboro, North Carolina 27203. I have lived at this piece of property for 42 years. I've had five different addresses, but I have not moved them. They're still sitting in the same place. I have asked this question for many years, and always been told anything from, you know, get over it, you can't always get what you want, to, hell, we don't know, but you just can't vote. So, last week, I went down and saw Ms. Melissa at the Board of Elections in her nice new office. Evidently, she didn't see me, so she didn't run. I asked her why I could not vote. I live outside the city, but I pay city school taxes. She says, "You can't." Let me look at the records. She goes, "Uh, wait a minute." After about five minutes, she says, "You're registered, your son's registered, and your wife's registered. Any other questions?" And we got talking about farms and stuff like this. This is, I said, "Does anybody have a map of the school district?" It's on the website. I go home, I get it on my computer, and it has it down there, won't open. My son tries to open it. I called up my friend, and he says, "I don't know, it won't open." So I called the, back to the tax office, I mean, to the register of deeds, election board, and they said, "Tax office takes it out." They said, "Oh." I called, and I said, "Oh, yeah, we can print you one." We had trouble opening it on their website, so they said, "We'll print you one." This is what I got for 20 bucks. So, I'm definitely in it. I want to know how many other people are in the Ashboro City School District and are not being allowed to vote. As the last election that we had, we had a whopping turnout of 6%. And the only thing that I can vote on in this election, and this Melissa printed me out a sample ballot, school board. Probably the most important thing that you've got on the election this year is our city school board. County school board, if it happened to be in that district. Last year, when we was all tied up with the coronavirus, I watched PBS on their in-room teaching math. I mean, this is some elementary stuff, eighth grade.
Mr. Dula, one minute.
How in the world do you ever, I mean, I don't see how they ever figured out to teach kids to read or do math. I know math's simple because there's only nine letters and one zero, nine numbers and one zero, but the way they were teaching on that thing, how in the world? Stuff that I can literally do in my head, they were taking a whole page, stuff that you could figure out like this. We need to do something, if there's anything that we can do. If you do one thing this year that's important, get out and vote for the school board. And I would like for this commission, committee, commissioners to notify the people that don't know that they can vote. You don't mind sending out all kinds of other information. I don't want to see a website, I don't want to see, it's on our Facebook page. It says, evidently, I crashed Facebook today when I was on it. I thought I was just being banned. I just thought I'd done something like I usually do and got banned again, but I wish you would send out something to everybody that's eligible to vote so we can get out and get some people to really get interested in the school board, because right now, it's the most important thing on the ballot, because if you can learn to read and you can do simple math, there ain't nothing you can't do in this world, because I'm an example of it. I had a, I was a terrible student in school, but I can do math up one side and down the other, and I still think it would be pneumonia instead of pneumonia. So please, notify the people that they can vote, because there's a huge turnout. And my God, we could get out more than 6% of the people to vote for the school board, city council, ah, who cares? But the school board's important.
Mr. Dula, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Within our 15 minutes?
One.
We within our 15 minutes.
Yeah, how many we got?
There are five more.
Yes. Who's next?
Susie Scott.
Hi, my name is Susie Scott, and I don't know if I can follow Bill Dula after that speech, but, so, thank you for giving us time to speak. I'm glad to see the county commissioners are working to bring more jobs to the area. If we can create a welcoming atmosphere for everyone, it will help recruit more businesses. And by everyone, I mean everyone in our county. I've come to you today regarding the statue in front of this courthouse. After the 13th Amendment was ratified, Edward Pollard traveled the South promoting the myth that slavery was not the cause of the war. And as far as it being the War of Northern Aggression, it's interesting to me that the first shot was fired by the South on Fort Sumter, on a US fort. So, in fact, the speeches and publications at the time of the Civil War, which included the Articles of Secession, prove that southern states seceded to not only preserve but expand slavery. There are descendants of people forced into slavery living in Randolph County today. Even though most residents of Randolph County were against the institution of slavery, hundreds of black children were torn from their families by the slaveholders that did live here. Our county did not vote to join the Confederacy in 1861. In fact, there were people hung here because they refused to fight against the United States. You were elected to represent the interests of all Randolph County citizens. Everyone who lives here deserves the grace of dignity. Having this statue looming in front of the building where county policy is set denies dignity for the descendants of slaves and the descendants of those who refused to fight against the army bearing the same flag that we just pledged allegiance to. The request to move the statue to a museum or another location away from this courthouse is reasonable, and it offers dignity for everyone that lives here. I'm asking you to support moving the statue from its present location to show that we welcome and respect all Randolph County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vera B. Andrews, and I reside at 1472 NC Highway 49 North, Ramstow, North Carolina. When we moved here in 1955, I became an active member of the 4-H Club, and that really touched my heart tonight to see the 4-H Club honoring the month as 4-H Club Week. And I have been a 4-H leader since after high school, I became a 4-H leader in my community after I married in Staley, North Carolina. And after that, my before and after school program, WAC and Randolph County 4-H Club, into our facility, the whole summer along to present nice programs concerning the head, heart, hands, and health for better living. So thank you for giving the 4-H an opportunity to express themselves tonight. They're very dear to my heart. And I have a, I came tonight to represent a part of the NAACP, and as I stated before, I am Vera B. Andrews, and I am the second vice president of the NAACP. And we have appeared before the county commissioners before, and we have met you individually to talk to you about the importance of removing the statue. And some of you were very receptive, and some of you said you were listening, and so now we're waiting to hear what your decision is, but we're praying that you will remember the words that were said by the one that preceded me tonight. Everything they said is true and more, and I would not be redundant to repeat what they said, but I do want to tell you a few points that I want you to remember tonight. The points are, the Confederates definitely went to war to preserve slavery. That's not an opinion, that's history. And second, the men from Randolph County fought for the United States as well, but they are left out of the monument. Number three, many men from Randolph County were executed for refusing to join the Confederacy. Those men were on the right side of history, and we have a statue honoring people who killed them. I think the statue should be removed immediately. We're giving you a chance to remove it so you can preserve it and put it where you want to, so no one can destroy it, demolish it or anything. We saw so many ugly things on TV. You saw what happened, what's happening in Burlington now, and you saw what happened in the other counties. The statues were demolished, ridiculed, pulled down, torn up, and you don't want that to happen, so we're asking you to peacefully just remove it and put it where you want to, but not in a public place where people come. No, I would not honor the statue, and yes, it should come down. And the last reason is, and I'll be very brief, that those, there were thousands of slaves born and sold right here in Randolph County, children ripped from their mom. Can you imagine your child being ripped from your arms and sold? I cannot imagine that. I would have been fighting and screaming and kicking and doing everything, but those slaves were, they couldn't do anything. So those slaves should be considered citizens of this county, just as the Confederate soldiers were. That statue honors a cause that kept our citizens in bondage, and for those reasons and so many more that I won't have time to elaborate on, the statue should come down peacefully. Thank you for your attention and for inviting us tonight.
Thank you.
When I wear this mask, I can't see or hear.
That's all right.
My name is Fay Cox, 1211 Grant Lane, Ashboro. Good to see all of you. It's been a while. You know, all good things come to an end, so I'm back. I came because I want the monument to stay, and I'll tell you why. I have researched, and I have researched, and I have researched. I have sacks of paper that's high that I've read and reread, and I'm not denying there was slavery, and it was definitely wrong, but slavery started in Africa. Blacks sold to blacks. Then when they found that could make a lot of money, when the ships came in, they loaded them on the ships and took them to other countries for sale. But that has nothing to do with this monument. That was a long time ago. I don't know anything about it. Was it living back then? And no was anybody else here, neither was anybody else here. But I had a son that went to war. He was in 82nd Airborne, the longest 18 months of my life. And if somebody put up a monument in honor of the soldiers that went, they'd have to fight me to take it down. So I'm fighting for these Confederate parents, brothers, mothers, dads. It shouldn't be taken down. It's not, it's not representing slavery. Nobody will deny that that is wrong. That monument, if you read what's on it, lest we forget, dedicated to the heroes. It's not a thing, black or white, it's just a remembrance of soldiers that went and fought. You know, history is changing. Everybody says it's not, but it is. Fort Bragg, where my son was stationed in the 82nd Airborne, is no longer going to be Fort Bragg. $2 million to change that name. Robert E. Lee, a masterful, mindful man that was in the war, whether he was right or wrong, he was doing his job.
Ms. Cox, one minute.
I just don't think we can change history, no matter what we take down, what we put up, or what we remove. It's history, and it needs to stay. Thank you, guys.
Hello, my name is Bryant Herring. I've been a resident of Randolph County about three years. I've been in North Carolina about 50 years. That makes me a little older than 50, right? I'm originally from South Carolina. I was one of the ones that helped start all this junk, but anyway, I was not, but my relatives and ancestors were. I just want you to think about some things. Right here in North Carolina, in Durham, you have one of the greatest hospitals in the entire world called Duke. You ever heard of Duke Medical Center? Well, guess who started Duke? A Confederate soldier. Mr. Duke, after the Civil War, he marched himself from New Bern, North Carolina to Durham, and I guess he was like the Indians. He said, "Well, if we can't beat them, we'll just hook them on smoking." So he started the American Tobacco Company. Who did he hire? Not all white people. He brought the black people and other people from around the state and around the communities and country, brought them into Durham, gave them jobs. Guess what happened? After the American Tobacco Company, he started Duke University. And guess what happened? He later started Duke Medical Center, which is now Duke Hospital. It was not a Union soldier that started Duke Hospital, it was a Confederate veteran. Now, this statue, these soldiers that are behind this statue, that have gone on before us, they don't care what you do with a statue, but I think in respect to the people in this nation, because I majored in history. I spent my life working with a power company, and that's a real good thing. You majored in history and you worked for an electric company. After the military, when I got in the military, I was from South Carolina, I was transferred to North Carolina with Carolina Power and Light, and I love North Carolina because my dad's from Sampson County, my mother was from Charleston. It just so happened I married a Tar Heel girl and got stuck up here. And I just want you to think about some of the things that always got, when I saw them tearing down the statue in Pittsboro and in Durham, and some of them were not even residents of North Carolina, little teenage girls up there pulling the statue down, I said to myself, you know, they may have cancer one day, and guess where they might go? They may go to Duke Medical Center. That's one of the best cancer institutes in the world. In fact, it's known for that. And I don't care what you think about Duke University or whatever, I'm a Clemson fan, it don't matter to me. But the thing of it is, I also look at the history about South Carolina. There was a general by the name of General Wade Hampton.
Mr. Harris, one minute.
Okay, I'll hurry up. Who fought for the Confederacy, and he had, South Carolina at that time was loaded with what they called carpetbaggers. They were not black people, they were not southern people, they were Union people down here taking advantage of the South. The black people came to General Wade Hampton and said, "Please run for governor of South Carolina. I can't, there's no need. Sir, if you will, these are freed slaves. If you will, we'll go from here to Charleston, we'll get the votes and put you in." They did, they took wagons, and they put him in office, and you know what it did? At that time, useless Grant was President of the United States, and General Wade Hampton called, he didn't call him, he sent a message, "I want these carpetbaggers and these Union soldiers out of the state of South Carolina." In two weeks, it just so happens that Grant was a, knew him and knew what kind of a military man he was, and in one week's time, the Union left. I want you to think about these statues, and I'm going to cut it off. I want you to think about these statues, and I'm going to cut it off in just a second. You think about your statues before you go throw them out or carry them off and do like you did, other people have done it. You think about your history. Think about your history. We learn from history, y'all. We learn from history. And if we tear up history like they did in China and Russia, the United States would be in just as bad a shape. Thank you for the opportunity.[624.04][624.04](applause)
Clyde Faust.
Good evening, friends, and thank you for this opportunity. And I want to say, before I even get started, I know that this board is doing some work to bring new economic, new jobs into Randolph County, and thank you for the work that you're doing. Before I even do anything else, I want to say to everybody, I understand why this is a hard issue to deal with. I'm a father, I got two daughters, and I understand that life is hard enough without having to deal with these types of issues. Both my daughters go to different high schools, and they, for the life of them, can't figure out why I can't be at each school at the same time to pick them up. But that's what being a parent is about. But the reason that we're here is because if we don't deal with these issues now, I'm forcing them to deal with these issues 10 years from now. And so that's why we feel like it's important that we, if we see an issue in our county, that we speak up, and that we go by the laws and the rules to try and get those issues changed. So let's just deal with the facts that cannot be disputed, that nobody can say aren't true. It is a fact that in the Confederate Constitution, Article 1, Section 9, Clause 4, it bans the, it makes it illegal to ban Negro slavery. You can't get rid of it in the Confederate Constitution. So if it was over states' rights, and 20 years after the war was over, if Alabama wanted to get rid of slavery, the Confederate Constitution says you can't. And while we heard instances of individuals in the South who may have done great things, it was Confederate legislatures, their whole legislative body in Florida, South Carolina, Alabama, Georgia, Louisiana, Mississippi, and Texas, who put in writing that they wanted to leave the United States, at least in part, to keep slavery. And when they talked about states' rights, like South Carolina did, South Carolina gave three examples of the states' rights that they wanted to defend. All three of them dealt with slavery. Let's talk about here in Randolph County. It wasn't even a close vote. There were over 2,400 people in Randolph County who said, "We don't want to join the Confederacy." There were less than 60 that said, "We want to be a part of the Confederacy. Our history should be honored." That monument doesn't do that. There were over 14 people in Randolph County executed because they chose not to join the fight, or chose not to be part of the Confederacy. History tells us that those people were right, but we have a monument in front of our government that is honoring the people who shot them. We know that there were thousands of slaves bought and sold right here in Randolph County. We know stories of children that were sold to people in other states that were so young they hadn't even been weaned from their mother yet. Those people, those slaves, were citizens of Randolph County, and that monument does not honor the sacrifices that they made.
Mr. Faust, 30 seconds.
What you put in front of your seat of power says a lot about who you are. Randolph County never was a Confederate county, and we aren't one now, and we should move that monument for that reason. Thank you.[845.13][845.13](applause)
All right, all right. Is that it? All right. Thank all of you on both sides of this issue who have spoken tonight. I think there were several who, knowing that this was not on our agenda, opted to not come tonight. And I just want to, I want to say this, sort of, my public comments to all of you. And I've been, I've been doing this pretty good while. There's never been a time when a Board of County Commissioners worked any harder for the citizens of this state than this Board of Commissioners has in the last five years. We have been fighting for over three years to save our hospital. It's still not done. We have new owners, but there's still issues dealing with that hospital, the financing of that hospital, which is, has everything to do with the health and safety and welfare of our citizens. We have a megasite where we're trying to bring in a named company to provide good-paying jobs and benefits for all the citizens of Randolph County. We are working on the pandemic that has been, we've been living with for coming close to two years, over a year and a half, and doing all that. And that has also in itself created a division within our county. And that, that's the point that I want to make, that we have had three, the largest construction projects at one time in the history of this county, with expansion of two schools and expansion of our Randolph County Detention Center. Almost $100 million that we've had to oversee. We're dealing now, we have a Braxton Craven School. What do we do about that school? And how do we use that to further deliver services to the citizens of this county? Any number of issues that we're dealing with right now, that have, we have our Recovery Act money that's been sent here for our benefit, to help the people who suffered and lost money during the pandemic. And what we do with infrastructure that will benefit this county for years and years to come, long after we're all gone. And to do that in the right way and to the best benefit of the citizens of this county and people who deliver services to the citizens of this county. And we live with that every day. And it's obvious that there's not a clear answer to this issue that's been brought up here tonight. And it has already become very divisive to our county. We don't need that. We don't need division within our county as we go forward, as we try to deal with the health and the safety of our citizens. And that's what we've been about. And now, this thing has just been sort of handed to us to deal with. And first of all, we can't take the statue down. Only the state of North Carolina can remove the statue. They might come back and ask us, or in a sense, contract with us to take it down, but we can't go take the statue down. And that's, that's fact. And so, that's another issue that we deal with, with this issue tonight. So I know, as I said, the pandemic is still ongoing every day. Do we get a booster shot? Do we not? Do we wear a mask or do we not? Every day, wherever we go. And what we do in Randolph, we're going to Guilford County is entirely different, because everybody's got different rules that they want us to abide by. And there's a lot of interruption in our public schools, when our kids can go to school, how long they can be in school, what do they do while they're there? And all of those things, we talk about the history. I was watching a movie, my wife and I were watching a movie one weekend with Jack Nicholson in it. I think it was Two Jakes was the name of the movie. And there was a line in that movie, one of the, I think it was Nicholson who said it, "We cannot forget history any more than we can change it." We can't change it. It happened. And we live among ourselves. That's what's important. And the diversity within our county has never been better than it is today. People that are on this agenda tonight, who are serving this county in the most difficult of times, every single day of their life. And I mean every day. They don't go home at 5:00 on Friday. They're still there all day on Saturday. They're still there all day on Sunday, dealing with the issues that confront the citizens of this county. And that's what we all need to know, and to have to the benefit of us all. So we'll, we will move through this, and we will, we will get through it at some point. But I just want you to understand where our focus is, what we want to do to continue to help this county to move forward. And I hope and pray that we all live together, and we all respect one another as we go through this process. So...[1191.25][1191.25](applause) So with that, we will take a five-minute recess for those who want to leave tonight, and then we will come back to our regular agenda. Thank all, thank all of you again.[1210.01][1210.01](laughter) (inaudible) (laughter) 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 (inaudible) 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 (laughter) 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 (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Good to be with you all this evening. I'm Anthony Ward, deputy director and chief operating officer with Sand Hill Center. I'm filling in for Victoria Witt, our CEO. She's in another county presenting the same item for consideration. I am a Randolph County, well, born and raised citizen, so it's always good to be back in a hometown area to be with you. The item for consideration is a resolution to add board seats. Sand Hill Center has 21 board members. We have two from each of our counties. We have three from Randolph County, four from Guilford County. Commissioner Allen serves as one of those representatives to the board. So we have usually one county commissioner from each of our counties serving with us, and then other citizens who are appointed by the Board of Commissioners. Twenty-one is the maximum number that's allowed by state statute. As we are looking to add a couple of other counties into the mix with us, unless we raise our number of board seats, we'll not have seats to give those counties as they join us. You're probably familiar with the Cardinal Innovations changes that are underway at the moment. Mental health has a lot of changes that go on in it from year to year, but one of those this year is Cardinal Innovations and their 20-county catchment area that is currently in the process of dissolving. They've given an option for each of the counties that were part of Cardinal Innovations to either move forward with the merger partner they've selected, which is Via Health in the Mountains, or decide to realign with another LME MCO who is close by them. So in that process, Davidson County has asked to join us, as has Rockingham County. Each of our counties have two board seats, as we say. The larger counties have a bit more. Davidson County is a little bit larger than Randolph County, so it makes sense to give them three seats. Rockingham County is the size of Moore County. They have two board seats with us now. It makes sense to give them two seats. So if we use that same kind of model moving forward, we need up to five additional seats. There's a process where we can request the secretary give us that power to expand our number of board seats. What it requires is a request from Victoria Witt going up to the secretary, but what it also requires is each of the Boards of Commissioners to adopt a resolution that allows her to ask for that increase in board seats. So that's the resolution that's in front of you this evening. I'll stop with that, but if you have any questions, I'll certainly be glad to address them.
David, anything you want to add to this?
Well, I think there's been a great deal of discussion about the Cardinal Innovations and where counties were going. There's been a lot of movement. Counties wanting to move from one catchment area to another, and this really puts Randolph County more in the center of the Sand Hill's catchment area with the addition of Davidson to the west, Rockingham up to the north. And so it's, I think Sand Hill's may have been approached by other counties, but the thoughts of the board were, we were happy with those two. The biggest thing is merging those two counties in in a very short period of time. Guilford County was merged in, Randolph County was merged in, and it was, I'm told, a more lengthy process. But it strengthens Sand Hill's, Anthony, there's what, will be six remaining LME MCOs?
That's correct. There's seven now with Cardinal leaving. There's down to six.
And Sand Hill's would be probably one of the, at least in size of the catchment area, the 11 counties, probably one of the smaller ones. So this kind of helps Sand Hill's maintain its stature within, in the state as well, within the LME MCO community.
Yeah. I'd like to say, too, and I had, the Rockingham counties especially, Mark Richardson and some of those call me about every day, but there's been some, I'll say irregularities, some issues in a lot of these areas around the state, as David referenced, but there's never been any issue within Sand Hill's. It's well-run, well-managed, and good representation, and they have avoided the mistakes and issues that's really caused what we're dealing with here tonight, everything.
We've had good leadership over the years with your participation, with Commissioner Allen and with all this, so we appreciate it.
So I just make that comment. So any other questions for Anthony tonight? You want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the joint resolution to add board seats to Sand Hill's Board of Directors.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And oppose no. Thank you, Anthony, and your patience tonight. So.
Thank you, Anthony. I will make point out that I did, when Victoria said she wasn't going to BLB here, I said, well, you know, we'll take Anthony. We understand he's second string. We'll take Anthony. Anthony does an excellent job with presenting a lot of information.
Yes.
If there's an issue going on, he's on top of it, and just the amount of knowledge. So I pick on you a lot, but we appreciate what you do.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anthony was the director at Guilford County when they merged, because of population, they had to find another partner. But like he said, he's a native of Randolph County, so we win twice. So thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. Good to be with you.
Okay, emergency services, Donovan?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me have some time on the agenda to kind of tell you where we are, where we've been right now, and what we may need to do in the future. There's 20 slides, but I'll go through them quickly. Just a reminder, this is where we have our ambulances positioned throughout the county, two in Ashboro, one in all of the other locations. So we have them pretty well spread out across the county. And you can see the call volume back in 2016 was 21,000, and in 2020, it was 23,352. We're up quite a bit. We do have different types of service in the county for ambulance. We have nine paramedic counties that are operated by my department. We have two advanced EMTs that can do a little bit more than a basic, a little bit less than a paramedic. We have those, as you know, as franchised with Ashrand and Piedmont, and their franchise will be coming up this year, so I'll be submitting for renewal. And then we have just added one basic EMT truck to cover discharges and things from the hospital, because Ashrand and Piedmont are having staffing issues like we are of keeping their trucks on the road. The basic unit can only handle very basic calls. Statewide, there's a paramedic shortage. This was, I did the presentation before a decision was made, but the state made a request on behalf of all the counties for 50 ambulances and 100 crew paramedics and EMTs from FEMA for the federal level. They approved, since the slide was made, 25 and 50, and they went to 10 different counties across the state, being the bigger counties like Guilford, Mecklenburg, New Hanover, Brunswick, and so forth. We did request one, but we were a little leery to request a lot because we didn't know what they were really sending. And what we found out is it is private agencies from across the nation, so we're not familiar with what they can do. Just as a recap, EMS is legally obligated to transport patients to the hospital of their choice when they're conscious and alert, and within a reasonable distance when they are stable. Oh, I said that already. We cannot transport a patient to a different hospital if they refuse. If we take somebody against their will and they're conscious and alert, it's essentially kidnapping. I mean, it's no different. When the patient is unconscious or not alert, then it is the paramedic's decision of where to take the patient. And we are able to break those down by different criteria. If it's a trauma patient, a stroke patient, a cardiac patient, then we can bypass our local facility if they're not capable of that and go to another facility. For example, if somebody's having a, what you call a stemming heart attack here in Ashboro, there's not a cath lab at Randolph capable of intervention, so we bypass and go straight to High Point or Cone. We regularly transport to all those destinations listed there. Our call volume, as you can see by the chart there, has gone up tremendously, and I would say that it's in part because of COVID, but it's not. It's everything. And we'll go through a little bit more detail in just a second, but we're about 5,000, getting close to 5,000 calls above where we were last year in our EMS service. There's another chart. You can see the red line is the current year. It's exponentially higher than where we normally are. Here's our transport history, just to give you an idea of where we go. We not only go to Randolph Hospital, but in the month of August, we took 581 to Randolph, and we took 739 to other locations outside of the county. You can break those down. Randolph Health, High Point, Cone, Wesley Long, Thomasville Baptist, Chatham, Forsyth, Moore, Montgomery, Other, which is just other hospitals like Allamance and so forth, non-included, and to the morgue. The way I break that down is by municipality and then the county down at the bottom. It just kind of gives you an idea of where we pick up patients and where we take them to. Same thing for September. 516 went to Randolph, 762 went out of county. And I will note that an out-of-county transport takes an average of two hours from start to finish, the time they call to the time our truck is back in service. Just a graph showing you where we transport and how we've almost dramatically decreased going to Randolph and increased going to other locations. So as I said before, I would like to say that it's, you know, because of COVID, but it's not. It's everything. But we have, if you look at 2020 compared to 2021, we are up 350 calls for COVID. 635 transports in 2020 through September, and then 984 through September this year. Here's where we took the COVID patients. Since the January of this year, 166 have gone to Randolph, 244 have gone to other hospitals. And these are patients that either have symptoms of COVID or they are confirmed positive when we pick them up.
Okay, so Donovan.
Yes.
Would you explain, you've already addressed that for, when you pick up someone and they have, you know, particular issues that we, you know, can't really treat.
Sure.
That you bypass that stop and take them right on to another place.
Right.
But for COVID, could you tell, could you explain why so many have gone to other hospitals?
Well, it's basically to share the load, and I'll give you an example. Like, for right now, I haven't heard any different. At 2:30 today, Randolph Health went on diversion, full diversion for any ambulance traffic. The reason is because they had 40 ventilated pa, 40, they had four ventilated patients in the emergency room holding there because they didn't have anywhere to put them, either upstairs in a room or at another location, in addition to all their rooms in the emergency room being filled, and 20-plus waiting in the waiting room. So we do try to spread the load. We've had conversations, for example, with Cone. Cone and Wesley Long are the same hospital. Cone says, can you try to alternate? Can you take, you know, this one to Cone, and the next time you come to Greensburg, go to Wesley Long? So we just try to share where the beds are, because most of these patients are going to have to be admitted, whether it's in a regular room or ICU.
Okay, so when you pick these patients up, are you making a call en route to find out?
We do.
Okay.
Yep. If the patient, again, is conscious and alert, and they say, we want to go to Cone, then we will head to Cone, but we call ahead via the radio, whether it's Randolph, any of the hospitals we go to, we call ahead via the radio, explain what the patient's symptoms are, what their vitals are, and then if they can't, don't feel like they can take that patient, they'll divert us and tell us the next closest to go to, or we'll make that decision with the patient. But it's usually the patient's decision, as long as they're alert. But we have, you know, in the last probably two or three weeks, it's, we've bounced around because of the higher call volume with COVID right now. Our overall responses, as I said, have gone up. We've not added any staff or ambulances into the service since 2018, when we added the ERIC ambulance, which has been a great benefit, by the way. But again, we're 4,500 calls ahead of where we were last year. Normally, when we see a 2,000-call increase, that's when I'm coming to you and saying, we probably need another, add another ambulance in this area or this area, and now we're almost double that. So we're averaging around 1,500 calls a month as it stands right now, and we've responded over 25,000. My opinion right now is that we do need to add additional staff, an ambulance in, a random one, and an ambulance in Archdale, and that would be eight paramedics for each to cover 24/7. We could look at doing just peak hours and peak times, and we have that information if we need to get into that later. Sir?
Will those bases handle a second ambulance?
Pardon?
Will those bases handle a second ambulance?
Yes, they're both capable. They have two bays, four bedrooms. Not that we need the bedrooms with 12-hour shifts anymore. And I don't need a base either. I could move them into a corner, to a fire station or anywhere else, so a little bit better with the 12-hour shifts. Our EMS staffing, our supervisors, paramedics, EMTs are frustrated, stressed with anxiety, and physically exhausted from working so many overtime hours to keep our ambulances on the road. The reason is because of our staffing. We've routinely had to deny vacations, and we currently have eight paramedic vacant positions, and it takes nine to run one shift, nine ambulance, paramedic ambulances. We've had to shut down at least one ambulance almost every shift for the last month, and that takes out a paramedic ambulance out of service. Surrounding agencies and counties are in the same boat. They're having to shut down ambulances because they don't have the staff. Wherever all of our staff go, and I notice, well, I thought I messed up that, where do they all go? Some have completed their nursing degrees and moved on to make higher pay. Some have gone into the critical care ambulance services in surrounding counties. One example is we just had a paramedic quit last week. She had a $16,000 sign-on bonus. She works three 12-hour shifts a week, and she makes more than she made here. That's hard to compete. And then a couple have gotten out of EMS altogether. We've had one that had a baby, decided to stay home and not work. It's not been because of pay or benefits unless it's higher pay they're leaving for, but it's not any common theme that we've seen. We've got two that are leaving to go to medical school. You know, it's a lot of different things. Total in the department, I have 18 vacancies. So when you look at 911, these are our two largest divisions within my department. Staff in there have been dealing with the highest call volume we've ever seen. Since 2020, our incoming call volume has literally skyrocketed. Prior to COVID, our daily call volume was around 300 calls dispatched to law enforcement, fire, and EMS. Today, we're between 400 and 500 calls is our daily average in a 24-hour timeframe. The number of staff has not increased since 2018, and if you'll recall, I did ask for eight positions back at the budget. We understood why, but since then, this is what we've experienced. We've got six full-time telecommunications that have left since 2020, citing workload and stress. We still have five full-time vacancies, and we need eight positions to handle the current workload based on the data and the formulas that we've seen. The call volume is not COVID. It's heart attacks, it's burglaries, strokes, wrecks, careless and reckless drivers, people reporting suspicious people and vehicles, medical alarms, business alarms, it's everything. The number of overdoses is the worst we've experienced to date, and our telecommunications are frustrated and stressed. Here you can see the, just a quick graph that shows the exponential increase and highlighted in red for 2021. And I want to tell you, the morgue is going to kill me. I do most of the work for the morgue, and since August 1st, we've had 49 decedents that we've had to house and take care of and move, and it's primarily overdose deaths. It's primary, people pass away and they've not seen a primary care physician that'll be able to sign their death certificate. It has been COVID-19, motor vehicle accidents, and suicides have the primary causes of those 49 deaths since August 1st.
Who does sign the death certificate there?
Depends on the situation. If you've seen your doctor within a year, or they prescribed you a medication within a 12-month period, and it's natural causes, law enforcement goes to every death that's away from a hospital or physician setting. So if they don't determine that it's suspicious and it looks to be natural, then the physician is responsible to sign the death certificate, and they have five days to do that. If it is suspicious, or if it falls into the general statute criteria of what has to be a medical examiner case, like a trauma, suicide, homicide, poisoning, I can't remember the entire list off my head, but then it's local medical examiner case. If it needs autopsy, the state medical examiner's office will sign. If it's not going to be an autopsy, like if it's an apparent suicide, then local medical examiner will sign the death certificate.
Does Dr. Stifair help with that?
He doesn't.
He doesn't?
No. He is a medical examiner, though. He's certified to do that, but he doesn't currently do that. Time consumption is the biggest problem we have with the morgue. And like I said, I do most of that, so it takes up a lot of my time. With all that said, we did win an award for Lifeline. This is our seventh year in a row that we've been recognized by the American Heart Association. We received the first gold award in 2014. We received silver prior to that and moved up to gold, and we've been there ever since. This is because of our.
Is that based on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Very good. Is that based on resuscitations, or what's?
This is based on resuscitations, but primarily our cardiac care, the protocols that we have in place, which are state protocols with a little bit more that Dr. Stifair allows us to do. But being a rural county and having only one hospital that's not a cardiac intervention hospital, to receive this award is, speaks volumes of our paramedics, EMTs, and our telecommunications and first responders, because they all play a part into that system. So that, it really includes all of our public safety into that. That's us getting hands on chest for cardiac arrests. From, if you call 911 now and you say, he's not breathing, he's not awake, they're immediately going to tell you, start pumping on their chest. If the patient says stop, then you can stop. If the patient doesn't say anything, then you're probably doing pretty good. Our success rate is averages in 30% to 40% percentile for saves, getting people back with pulses. And that's because people in the community, when we call 911, we say, start pumping on their chest, they do it. And there's no time delay in cardiac infusion. So when it changed from not doing mouth-to-mouth, people are now a lot less reluctant. You know, all I got to do is pump on their, pump on their chest, okay, I can do that, but I'm not giving them a mouth-to-mouth, which I don't blame them. So that's, that's been a big help. And that is it. I wanted to bring that to your attention, give you an update of where we are, what we're facing, what our employees are going through. We're going to have to look at some kind of sign-on incentives or something to get, to get some paramedics into the county. And like I said, it's everywhere. We heard the other day, Forsyth County, one of the larger counties and a bigger EMS service, you know, they normally run 16 ambulances at night, and they were down to four. And it's because of staffing across the state. It's not, you know, it's just, the pandemic did a put hurt on some of the paramedic classes. It's delayed us. So that's, that's where we are. But we're going to have to look at some kind of incentives to attract paramedics to Randolph. We've got 14 in paramedic class right now. They're working full-time and, working full-time for us, but going to class, but they won't be finished until December of next year.
Well.
Any questions?
I have two questions.
Okay.
All right, so going back to the state requesting FEMA assistance, are we getting any of that?
We're not right now. They're evaluating it every two weeks. Like I said, we are going to put in for one. We're a little hesitant. We thought if it was military, you know, medics that were coming, we know what they're capable of, but it's private services, so we were a little leery. But they are going to evaluate it every two weeks and deploy them where they think, where the state thinks they need to go, based on the requests.
I sent Donovan an email earlier this week, or last week, about that issue, because Guilford County got two.
Right.
Guilford County got two is a headline in the Enterprise one morning, and.
Mecklenburg got three or four.
Yeah. He sent me a good explanation or description of how that works, but like I say, in two weeks, they pick them up and move them somewhere else.
Correct. So we'll keep in touch with that.
All right, and for the citizen pumping, I've heard that if you know Michael Jackson, you can do a pretty good job.
Yeah. Well, the theme song is "Staying Alive."
"Staying Alive."
So if you know that good song from back in the disco days, that's all you got to sing to keep the best rhythm. Hard and fast is what we tell them.
Okay.
And it is Sudden Cardiac Arrest Awareness Month, so if you don't know how to do CPR, you need to learn.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You know what it's about?
Maybe.
I just, I just wondered, seriously, though, I mean, so that's like 60 days since August 1st, going back to the morgue. Our capacity of whatever you call it, beds?
At one time, yes.
Is not 45?
No, that's spread out. Since August 1st, I've had that many bodies, so they're coming and going.
That's, I mean, so you're really over capacity. I mean, do you have overflow?
Well, we can hold 12 at a time. I will tell you that Pew helped us out the other day because we had two bariatrics at the same time. We could fit, we had seven normal-sized decedents, and we had two bariatrics, and they only fit on a table, not in a slot. So Pew helped me out and over, held one overnight, which I was very grateful for because I didn't know what I was going to do. because I didn't know what I was going to do. But most of the time, it's spread out enough because we've got them. When we get them, then we either send them back out to the funeral home or we send them to Raleigh to get autopsy. So they're constantly coming and going. So it helps with the census that we're not full all the time.
Because I was doing, I mean, that's more than one every other day.
It is. But one comes in, one's going to Raleigh, one's coming back.
Kid that was killed on the motorcycle there in Archdale, you had him for a couple of days, didn't you?
We did. And that's another issue. I've got one now that I've had for 12 days and it's because the family doesn't have enough money to cremate him. We're only required to keep them 10 days. We try to avoid that because then it gets turned over to Tracy at DSS. And if we can't find family or relatives, then she ends up having to pay out of her department to have the person cremated. So it's a lot of hands and people involved when someone passes away.
Other comments, questions?
I should have known.
I think if you need volunteers, Commissioner Kidd would probably like to work at the morgue.
I thought so, yeah.
He can do night shift.
Night shift. Okay, yeah, just stop on by. All right. I think I'm next still.
All right. Thank you, Donovan.
I think I'm next still on the agenda.
You got the next night.
I do. And this will be quick as well. Just wanted to update you, as Will pulls it up. This is about our opioid epidemic and the dashboard that collectively the county created. We submitted this to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for their annual award and were fortunate enough to have, to won. But the reason is because we've been tracking our overdoses through the epidemic, not pandemic, but epidemic since 2016. And we did that because, as you remember, when we had that first collective meeting at AVS, we identified a long time ago, this is a big problem in Randolph County. You were very supportive, you put money to it and supported the collaborative. So in 2016, we started tracking our CPR attempts and different measures of resuscitation with people who were an overdose victim. Using the newest data that emergency services began collecting, several county departments collaborated to display the data in a mapping dashboard using ArcGIS. If you go to our county homepage, on the front page, you look to the right, scroll down, it'll say opioid epidemic. On the right-hand side, you click that and this dashboard is going to come up. And it's going to show you near real-time data. And when I say near, I only update it every month. Jared updates it every month after I collect the data. But to formulate this, it took help from our IT department. And they helped us with GIS. Jared Byrd, Amanda Dawkins and Linda Smith, with the support of Michael Rowland and Jeff Mullins, came up with this electronic dashboard because a lot of people need data and they need real data. Data that you get from the state has to be vetted and it takes almost a year to really get good data of how many deaths, how many males, how many females, you know, have been affected by the opioid epidemic. So we break down this data the best we can between 911 records and patient care reports. Myself and Pat Muncannon collect and enter the data. Jared updates it and as I said, the IT helped us to develop the board. The dashboard displays the total number of overdose calls. It tells you how many times Narcan was administered, whether it was by fire department, police department, a bystander. There's a lot of helpful information. It has a heat map, so you can see where the primary calls are. You can zoom in to neighborhood level, but you can't zoom in close enough to know who it actually was. So a lot of different things that the dashboard will do. And again, you can review that if you go to our homepage and click the link on the right down at the bottom.
Do you do the updating?
Do what now?
Who updates?
So primarily right now, Pat Muncannon, who works for us part-time, she collects the data. 911 provides her the data. When we have an overdose call, they send her a copy of the call. She goes back, pulls the patient care report. So it doesn't include hospital data. People who show up to the ED who may be experiencing an overdose, it doesn't include their data. So we have to wait until it comes out from the state to get that. But paddle enter it, Jared updates it and then we share it. The other part of it is with the collaborative that we have that meets every couple of months until the pandemic hit. But we just started meeting back. So we bring in now Public Health, who has been a big driver of the collaboration and bringing the community together for the opioid topic and discussion and different plans, you know, that we're going to do to try to address these things, whether it's through needle exchange or whatever. So we've got Public Health now that's involved in this program. And the library, Ross Holt, put together a lot of resources. When you scroll below the map on our county webpage, you're going to see a host of resources that the library came up with that our citizens can go to to learn more about the epidemic, to learn how to, you know, if you're affected by it, whether it's a family member, a child or whatever. There's all kinds of resources there to do it. So we're real proud of this award that we were recognized. Only 10 are selected across the state each year and we were one of those 10.
What did you win, Donovan?
I think they're gonna.
Sure, David, hit it up.
Come here, Donovan.
Well, I want to recognize if Jared and Linda and Amanda, she's here, Jeff, everybody, if they'll come up.
Is it's a?
It's a photo op for our new girl back there now.
It's, Hope and I and Chairman Fry were down at the Wilmington and they had a big nice board and I had to tote it back. Hope got to carry this little thing, so. But basically it's for the local government, federal credit union. And again, they have 10 different, I think this is the only one dealing with opioid. So, but it's the development and implementation of opioid epidemic outreach. List on here are team members, Jared Byrd, Linda Smith, Donovan Davis, Pat Muncannon, Ross Holt and Susan Hayes, who was at that time was the Public Health Director. And two, there was a nice little video that was done for the county commissioners at the convention there or annual meeting. And it was very nicely done. Some of you may have been interviewed for that. It was very nicely done, so it's a big deal.
I think they submitted the video, didn't they? Yeah.
Jared did it.
Jared did it.
It was pretty good.
It's really good.
It's only a minute. So a few of them, but I'm going to present that to you very. I'll, I'll definitely have everybody here to help us out. We're lucky to have all the partners over here.
In here.
If I could just add, one of the things they look at, the NCACC in selecting these award winners, these excellence and innovation awards, is if it can be duplicated fairly easily somewhere else. So if you have a county that's large and gets this huge grant to do something, well, that may not be easily duplicated somewhere else because, you know, every county may not have access to those funds. But something like this could be very valuable to other counties. And so that's, it's the innovation, it's the collaboration, it's the project itself, but it's also the fact that it can be used and duplicated in other counties.
Thank you. Tracy?
Good evening. I have to add my comments to Donovan. I am so happy to be part of a county, a leadership team who do each have each other's back. As Donovan stood up here and talked about some of the things that's going on in our community, those are the same things that is affecting our families and the citizens that we serve at Department of Social Services. And we're here at a time where we're all expected to do more with less. We don't ask for, we're not out in the community soliciting business, but guess what? Business is here and business is booming for all of us in the business of helping our folks in the community. I am an eternal optimist and just when I feel like we have a handle on what's going on in our community, what resources we have to do our work, one more thing comes along. And that is what I am here to talk about this evening. Another new thing that comes along that asks us to speak outside the box and speak, work innovatively, to come up with new solutions to old problems. You have heard me mentioned here before regarding the challenges we have with placing our foster youth into foster families. You've heard me talk about our numbers. We have approximately 40 foster parents in Randolph County, but we have more than 200 youth in care. So those numbers cause by themselves a lot of challenge for us. You've heard me stand up here and talk about social workers having challenges, placing youth and having to stay overnight in the agency. I did want to share one success. We have not had to do that in a very long time. Sand Hills, what we call B-Huck, Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center, has really been a support to us and our youth. If we have someone that we cannot place, we take our youth there and we can stay there 23 hours, not 24, but that keeps us out of our office with our foster youth. So that has been a tremendous help. The two session laws that I want to talk about today, session law 132 and session law 123. And I'll start first with session law 132. And in order to give you a good look about what that's going to mean for us, I have a fictitional young man that is like the youth that we are serving now. We're seeing more and more youth like this. James, fictitional James is 13 years old. He has a diagnosis of post-traumatic stress disorder, ADHD. He has anxiety, depression and oppositional defiant disorder, or we call it ODD. And I have to tell you what that means. That's a disorder, a mental health disorder that includes frequent and persistent anger, irritability, argument, defiance and vindictiveness. And that is something that many youths who have challenges with behavioral health and substance abusing have. I wish this were rare, but we have two youths that we are serving that's very similar to this right now. And we are struggling to find placement for these young people. In this issue, our fictitional youth, James, he assaulted his last foster parent. The foster parent required six stitches in the face for the foster father who was trying to protect his family. James, of course, was kicked out of that foster home. But before he left, he destroyed two TVs, a game system and broke a window in the home. James was taken to the hospital and involuntarily committed. After a short time, the DSS social worker picked him up as he was in the custody of Randolph County Department of Social Services. I don't want to paint an unfair picture that of the 200 youths we have, this is the majority. Honestly, this is the minority of youths. But if you can understand, we have youths who can go to traditional foster homes, but we spend more time, more effort and more resources on this minority youth that are so difficult to place and so difficult to handle. So you've heard about James. How does this new session law affect James? Session law 132 recognizes the limitations of our current treatment for children like James. And on a positive note, it requires DHHS to develop a plan and submit it by January 2022. And I'm telling you, we have a couple of Jameses at the office that we're trying to place now. And I'm excited about a plan submitted in January 2022, but that doesn't help us today. Session law 132 requires the LME and MCO to arrange for a clinical assessment of the juvenile in the hospital. And it sets out specific steps that the LME, MCO and Department of Social Services must follow. And it includes a timeline. I can honestly tell you that Department of Social Services and the LME, MCO, we are already doing our part to be proactive. So we really didn't need a session law to encourage us to work together. We've done a really good job doing that already. But having that in a session law does not assist us in finding an appropriate placement quicker. Those steps do not increase our wait time of having youths who don't have appropriate treatment and don't have appropriate placement. The law also specifically creates a new statute for juveniles in DSS custody that present at a hospital emergency department, such as our fictitional James. And it allows for a limited appearance in court for the hospital, the LME, MCO or DHHS to file a motion and to request someone, it says, an entity, to pay reasonable cost of the hospital stay, including any property damage. And I wanted us to all be on the same page about what this might mean for us in the future. Session law 132 is effective October 1. That was a few days ago. So we are certainly educating everyone and reaching out hands and trying to swim upstream with this issue. We don't want to wait until something happens. We want to reach out to our LME, MCOs, our legislative partners to let them know that we are working together in trying to find faster placements for children. But I am here to tell you, it's a numbers problem. It's a numbers problem.
Tracy, James would have fit into this, is that what you're saying?
Yes. It's a numbers problem. So regardless of how well we work together, and we do work well with our LME, MCO, they can't manufacture a placement. Department of Social Services can't manufacture a placement. And in the meantime, these youths who have severe challenges are in our community and not being treated appropriately.
Tracy, quick question on the LME, MCO side of things. I'm assuming James would, you know, with the Medicaid transformation, James, and I'm glad Anthony's still here, he would be, could be in the Taylor Plan or he could be outside the Taylor Plan? And at that point, the LME, MCO is not even, could not, possibly not even be involved? Is that right?
That's absolutely true, but we don't have that issue just yet. But yes, that could be true, although the state is working on a plan and trying to assist us, again, working upstream to place our foster youth where they can be either in a Taylor Plan or regular, so they can continue to be served.
In a Taylor Plan.
Right.
Which would work here, but if they're outside the Taylor Plan, the LME, MCO, because of the severity of the case, may not even be involved.
That's right.
It'd be one of the other.
The PHP.
Yeah, one of the other providers, yeah.
That's right. So more challenges.
James, being a juvenile, can't go to Daymark? Is that correct?
He can go.
So he could go to Daymark, but there is the issue of safety for our staff. We prefer to have people around and James has to stay overnight. He's got to sleep somewhere. And in order for us not to sleep in the office, we are so fortunate to have Sand Hills B-Huck, the Behavioral Health Urgent Center. So James can stay there, sleep there. We can have two staff members to supervise him and we just have to leave for an hour and then can come back. So it's not a real placement, but it's somewhere to place him, to keep him so that he's not in the office. But it's not treatment. It's not what he needs. So if no more questions about 123, we, no, 132, confusing, we'll go to session law 123. And in session law 123, imagine James is not in Department of Social Services custody. He's not a DSS kid. Imagine James is a delinquent and undisciplined youth and he is receiving services from Division of Juvenile Justice. And what session law 123 does is modify the definition of neglect to include youth who are being served by DJJ, whose parents are uncooperative and don't follow the plan of the juvenile and family team. So all of those youths will now be referred to Department of Social Services for CPS report because now that youth meets the definition of a neglected youth. So imagine James, not in DSS custody. So imagine James, not in DSS custody, being served by Division of Juvenile Justice, and they can't get the parents to cooperate. So now they bring in another agency, not just DJJ, but now it's Department of Social Services issue, and we have a young person where, again, there aren't enough treatments in the community, and he is our issue.
It says then the court could make, in this case us, order to pay for his evaluation and treatment.
That's right. So the second thing, the second bullet talks about if that juvenile, and there is a lot of other language, I just wanted to get, fit this on here, but there's a lot of other language in the bill. If the juvenile doesn't have health insurance, if they can't find it with adult corrections, if nobody has money, then the court could order the county to pay for the juvenile's treatment and assessment. And I can tell you that that treatment and assessment is not cheap. It is very, very expensive.
That lets his, that lets his parents off the hook completely. I mean.
It certainly does let his parents off the hook completely, but that's one of the reasons I wanted to talk about this because I don't like my staff members to bring me a problem without any solution, and I'm kind of doing that to you, but I just wanted to make sure that we are all aware of what the session law means. It seems like that we didn't have a seat at the table when they decided on these.
That was my question, Tracy. Did our local representatives know, did they get involved in any of this, or?
Well, honestly, I don't really know the answer to that. I can tell you that the North Carolina Directors Association lobbied very, very heavily, trying to change some of the language so that the county wouldn't have to arrange for evaluation and treatment, and everybody else is let off the hook, so I really don't know. And if you know anything about how things work with the legislature, things move very, very quickly when they decide, and you can't effect change effectively. You can't change things. But I wanted to bring this information, and I wanted to let you know that we are trying to be proactive. We are reaching out to our community supports to let them know that we all need to work together. Just because they made a session law and now make the county or Department of Social Services responsible for the youth, they haven't done anything to increase the placements. There are no new treatments in the community. There's no monies that came along with this bill, just the responsibility of having to do that work. No, you know, no accompanying policy to help us navigate. And the population of delinquent and undisciplined youth that we have talked about will require very expensive placements that cost hundreds of dollars a day. In this slide I put up, just for your information, some of the cost. Again, the majority of youths in Department of Social Services custody, they are in traditional foster homes. And if you look here, traditional foster homes cost four hundred and seventy-five to six hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. Reasonable cost, right? But level two, level three, that number goes up. Therapeutic foster care for someone like our fictitional James, it could be eighty-eight dollars a day in therapeutic foster care, and if that didn't work, then the rate goes up further to two hundred and eighty-five dollars a day. So I hope you're not going to ask me what this might cost because I don't have anything to compare it to. It's brand new. This is something we haven't had to do before.
My question was, what you're saying, different way. How do we, how do we budget for it because it's a case-by-case basis? You don't know till you find a James out there that, that is, that requires it.
We don't know. And again, I hate it when my team members bring me a problem and no solutions, but I just don't know. I don't have enough data. There's no history to tell me yet, but we are going to try and work upstream as much as possible, reaching out to partners. And again, Sand Hills has been a really good partner for us, but they cannot manufacture these placements. And these placements, our social workers drive hours, two hours away to South Carolina, different places. It's not easy, and although they address some of the challenges in the session law, they didn't address the root cause. And the root cause is we don't have enough treatment. We don't have enough placements for these children. But they certainly lay that issue at the feet of the county and Department of Social Services.
The bottom line, Tracy, as I see it, it's pushing the cost down to the county. It's an unfunded mandate.
Unfunded mandate.
It's an unfunded mandate.
So I said that to say that in the future, I really want us to have one voice when it comes to things like this. I don't know what NCA-CC stance was on this or NACO, but I, I would love for us to have one voice so that we can be heard.
I have a question. Can you go back one slide? Do you mind?
I have no idea. Oh, that one?
So, and you always have to train me on stuff like this, so forgive me. So obviously, traditional foster care, we're pretty familiar with that. On the, like, the therapeutic foster care and the level three, is that like, you know, the service from High Point that serves up in the Sophia area? Is it Youth Unlimited, is the name of it?
Yeah, it's Youth Unlimited.
Yes.
Is that what that is?
If I'm not mistaken, that's the level two. That's a therapeutic.
Okay, so that's level two. So, and I can't remember how large, yeah, obese and former, how many male and female, but that's the type of service that would fit in there?
Yes.
But certainly, there's no public funding on that.
There was a kid at Randolph in there a few years ago that was a
Thank you.
good football player at Randolph High School. I'd love to know where he is today. Seemed to be a pretty good kid. Other comments or questions?
Thank you for your time and your attention.
Personally, I want to thank you for coming and doing that. Being on the board, she's addressed it to our, our board, and of course, informed us. I'm hearing again for the second time, but this board needs to understand, or at least try to understand, what, what this organization's been forced to do, to deal with. It's going, it can be, can be expensive.
It can be extremely expensive. If you look at the level two and level three, those therapeutic homes, you know, a month for traditional foster care is almost a day in the other levels. And to add my comments to Donovan about the overdoses, I, I don't know where the end is with this, but the youth, younger youth are substance abusing, self-medicating, and mentally ill, along with parents, and it's, it's caused us to really have to think outside the box, but I don't know where the end is with all of that, but it's certainly ravaged our community, our families.
Mrs. Chairman, one thing I did see, or hear, I guess, was a concern that I, that I heard saying, "Parents, keep your pills locked because the kids are getting to the pills."
Yeah.
Well, my mind is not as sharp as a couple of those that have accounting skills that sit on this board, but according to my calculations, if we have two hundred kids, children in foster care, and they're just in traditional foster homes, and we figure that at six hundred and thirty-four dollars a month, then that's one million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
You missed my annual meeting at the DSS. That's, that's about right.
And I think we've had ARP requests to address some of the issues that have been compounded by COVID in our homes, and it's far, far less than that. And part of beginning an initiative in Randolph County to try to keep children out of foster care. I believe it's cheaper than one in five-tenths million dollars.
You're absolutely correct, and while I have a moment, I also want to let the board know there is a new federal policy called Families First that effective October one, youths who are placed in group home settings will no longer be eligible for 4E, which is a type of Medicaid that pays a large amount of the placement cost after fourteen days. So they are all moving toward making sure that children aren't in congregate settings, and everybody's very clear that they don't want children in congregate settings, but nobody's working to tell us where they can go. Thank you for your time.
Very good presentation, not a good presentation, but well documented. All right. Tara? Have a public health update.
Good evening, all. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. I'm here this evening to provide a COVID update for Randolph County. I sure wish I was here to say COVID was gone, over and done with, see you later, but unfortunately, we're not quite there yet. As you know, the last six weeks or so, we've been dealing with the Delta surge, which has our numbers have risen, cases, deaths across the board. As of today, we are at twenty thousand, six hundred and forty-seven cases, and that's since March twenty-third of twenty twenty. We are currently at two hundred and ninety-five deaths that are related to COVID, and I will note that that's sixty-four deaths since early July of this year. At this time, we currently have nine long-term care facilities in an outbreak, and just as a reminder, an outbreak in a congregate living setting is two or more cases in a resident or it could be your staff. It could be one of each. We have an outbreak at the Randolph County Detention Center, and we have a cluster, and clusters are recognized in childcare centers or school settings, and that's five or more cases that are epidemiologically linked, meaning those folks were together in a common setting and picked up the virus from each other. So right now, we have one cluster, and that's at Trinity Elementary School. Right now, our vaccination status, and I want to, I want to note that NC DHHS now has the capability to give us a little better vaccination status. Before, we were only looking at the population of Randolph County as a whole. Now we can break it down and look at it by the population that's eligible, which is a little more accurate. So as of today, Randolph County, the population, individuals that are twelve and older are eligible for the vaccine. Right now, forty-nine percent of those that are twelve and older in Randolph County are, have had their first dose, and those that are fully vaccinated in Randolph County that are twelve and older, we're at forty-five percent. Just a little tidbit, Randolph County Public Health, you know, we continue to do vaccines, have since the very end of December. We have administered at Randolph County Public Health sixteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one first doses, sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-three second doses, four hundred and seventy-eight third doses, or that's an additional dose for those that are immunocompromised, and we have administered three hundred and sixty-eight Pfizer boosters, which just got started last week. While our number of positive case numbers per week are still elevated, I cautiously want to mention that we are starting to see downward trends in the metrics, and that's something that's happening statewide, which is encouraging, but I would encourage folks to continue to take safeguards. Don't let your guard down. Continue practicing, you know, the social distancing, face coverings in public spaces because we are still experiencing high transmission in Randolph County. So I encourage folks, don't let your guard down. Get vaccinated if you haven't gotten vaccinated, and like I said, just continue making good decisions and, like I said, wear face covering indoors, good hand hygiene, good respiratory hygiene, et cetera. If you've got symptoms, get tested. There's testing all over the county that's available. Just real quick, just to give you all an update as far as what Randolph County Public Health continues to do, we are at eighteen months in. We opened our EOC March the third of twenty twenty. Our EOC moved to Emergency Services on March seventeenth of last year, and then we moved back, we de-escalated and moved back to the Health Department in February of this year, but our EOC is still technically open. There's folks, there's, there's a core group of us that we communicate all the time, all day long. But anyway, I want to let you know what our team continues to do. We, we re-implemented testing when testing numbers went up about four weeks ago. We continue to partner with StarMed Healthcare to make sure that there is no-cost testing available at RCC in Archdale, RCC here in Ashboro, and we're working right now, I'm getting hit a little bit, but we're working with StarMed to also make sure that there's vaccine available at maybe RCC in Archdale, maybe in Liberty, those kinds of things. We want that, we want people to have full access to both testing and to vaccine. At Randolph County Health, Public Health, I just mentioned that we are doing first doses, second doses, third doses, and just last week, we began administering Pfizer boosters for folks that are eligible right now, and those, those eligible individuals have to have already received a two-dose series of Pfizer and be six months out from that two-dose series.
Tara, is the, is the booster the same dosage as the second shot?
For Pfizer, it is.
For Pfizer?
Yes, it's the exact same vaccine. Right now, Pfizer is the only booster, but come later this month, October fourteenth and fifteenth, FDA is going to look at Moderna and J&amp;J for boosters. Around that, at that meeting, they're also going to consider can vaccines, can you interchange? Like, for example, if somebody's had two doses of Pfizer, can they follow up with a booster of Moderna or J&amp;J? They're going to evaluate that and make a decision. Pfizer vaccine is probably going to be here for children ages five to eleven later this month, early November. The FDA will look at that Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, and that's for Pfizer only right now. Our team does also continue to work closely with the schools, long-term care facilities, childcares, other businesses. We're on the phone with folks all the time, offering guidance, walking them through scenarios. We're just there to offer support, provide education where needed, those kinds of things. I do want to quickly give a shout out to Randolph County Public Health staff. Our staff have been working hard. They always work hard, but they've been working really hard for the last eighteen months. They're pretty tired, and I don't know if y'all, you all are aware, but in the last probably twenty-four months, prior to COVID, we were, we were doing some succession planning because a third to, about a third of our staff were eligible to retire at one time, and guess what? Two years ago, that mass exit has started. It continued through COVID. We got a lot of, a lot of new staff at the Health Department. Not only is our team doing COVID response, they're training new people, and we lost a bunch of knowledge. We, you all know, we have a lot of staff that have been around fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, so we've, we've lost a lot of great people, but we've brought a lot of new, good folks on board too. But training new people during a pandemic is quite a challenge, but our team's up to it. But I couldn't be more proud of our staff. They, they work hard every day. They're, they're tired, but they keep coming back for more. I just wish everybody could get a glimpse at what our team does every day. They're, I, I appreciate them, and I know you all do as well. So if we do get to this other side, and I do think we are getting to this other side of, of the Delta surge, we have a bi-weekly call with the DPH, and the conversation has started. I'm not sure where it will go. You know, COVID's never going to go away. It's going to become, you know, it's a communicable disease. It will, it will be, become one on the list like flu and all the other communicable diseases. So the plans, plans and discussions are underway to, you know, what are our next steps? When, when is it going to be declared an endemic disease? And, you know, where, where do we start scaling back on some of the, the things that we have in place now? So once I know more about that, I'll be happy to share that. But I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Questions?
How are you accommodating? I'm assuming there'll probably be a little bit more of a surge in the number of third doses, boosters. How are you planning to, to deal? How are you planning to, to deal, you know, back in February, March, April, have the drive-throughs and that kind of thing? How are you as far as facilities and resources and that kind of thing?
So you know, last, last summer, last fall, we brought on some Carolina's contact tracing collaborative folks. That's an agreement that the state, NCDHHS, DHHS has with CCNC, Community Care of North Carolina. So that's surge staff, they provided us some surge staff. And that surge staff has been helping us with contact tracing. They've been doing a lot of our case management since, primarily, they've been doing that since January. We kept those folks on. We actually have folks embedded at the Health Department, and we have folks embedded at North Gate Shopping Center. They help us answer the appointment line, they help us answer the coronavirus hotline, which is still, still active. And again, they're helping us with case management. When we knew the boosters were coming, we asked for a few more staff to come on board just to prepare. And the state has given us a few additional staff. We were fully expecting last week, once boosters were announced, we were expecting, you know, the call volume to grow, to grow. And I look back today, back in January, it wasn't uncommon for us to get eight, 900 calls in a day. But last week, we did not get quite the response, even though, you know, we've, we've, we've notified media, we've put it on social media, email. We did, you heard me say the numbers, we did boosters on Thursday and Friday. We allowed for 400 boosters for each of those days. Thursday, we did about 100, which means on Friday, we did about 268. So we haven't been overrun. That's not to say that will not change once the Moderna booster becomes available, because we did, we have done both Pfizer and booster, Pfizer and Moderna shots. But we think with the surge staff that we have, with the CCTC folks, that we'll be able to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
So are you just doing the drive-through?
Yes, we are still continuing.
Need an appointment?
By appointment, yes.
All right.
One, one question I have, Mr. Chairman. I'm hearing more and more things coming out about, don't let your guard down that, that there's going to be a surge or possibly a surge of the regular flu. What do you hear?
Could be. I mean, we didn't see flu very much last year, could be. So worries and thought, get your flu shot.
Have you got any reactions to the boosters?
To the booster? Not that I'm aware of. You know, as a whole, you know, we've had a few, a few reactions to the, to the first dose, second dose, third dose, but they've all been pretty minor. You know, folks, some folks got themselves worked up, you know, getting anxious, and I understand that. But as a whole, most everybody's done okay.
Friend of mine, last Tuesday, Wednesday, had his flu shot in one shoulder and his booster shot.
There you go, he had a sore, he had two sore arms.
He had no reaction.
Good, good. You know, most of the time, we have, in monitoring, we have, we're blessed to have Robin Watley. She is retired from Randolph County Emergency Services as an EMT or paramedic. And she's come back and worked with us temporary, part-time to serve in our monitoring area. And she, when there's a problem, she, she's right there on it. So we're blessed to have her on our team right now.
All right, other comments, questions? Thank you, Tara. You and Tracy, keep it up. We're behind y'all.
We appreciate it.
Okay, Jill? Human Resources.
So good evening, everybody. So you've heard from three of our four largest departments, Health, Social Services, and Emergency Services about the, I guess, the good, the bad, the ugly, some of the challenges that they have, some good things that are going on. But what I would like to speak with you all tonight is some strategies to support our staff that have been frontline, front and center with COVID from the start of the pandemic. So as you all know, we do have good staff in Randolph County. We have employees that really have very specific skill sets, knowledge, skills, and abilities to do the jobs that they do. And we are very fortunate to have them. They've been dedicated throughout the coronavirus pandemic. And we really appreciate the work that all of our staff have done. Now, having said that, we have some staff that really, again, they've been front and center. The nature of their jobs requires that they, while we do give them mitigating to the degree possible with masks, shields, gloves, they are still in environments where they are in the midst of potential exposure to the coronavirus. And what we want to talk with you all tonight about is some opportunities to recognize these staff. And we are going to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan funds and their availability. So as we talk to you about options for employees, that's on the next couple of slides ahead. Some of the funding that may be available is the American Rescue Plan funds. And then if there are some of the options we're looking at that don't meet the criteria for those American Rescue Plan funds, may require use of county funding. So looking at the American Rescue Plan funding, what are the eligibility criteria for premium pay? And that's, premium pay is sort of a blanket means of pay, can be a lump sum, can be hourly increase, and that's on another slide too. But premium pay is how you can use the American Rescue Plan funds. So to use those funds, the employees have to be performing essential work. And essential work is defined in the interim final rule, is work that involves regular in-person interactions, regular physical handling of items that were handled by or are to be handled by others. And it cannot be remote or telework, must be on-site work. Now, when can the funds be used through, through the American Rescue Plan? So the pay, the money can be used retroactively. So we are considering, looking back to March of 2020.
Is that when we did our, our state of emergency?
Yes, sir. March of 2020. The payments can be made prospectively, which is going forward. And if you've read the act, it says through December 31 of 2024. But we would look at, again, the state of emergency. The premium pay can be retroactive payments only, prospective payments only, or a combination of both. And the eligibility requirements, you can have different eligibility requirements for retroactive payments or prospective payments. As I mentioned earlier, the payment options can be a lump sum payment, which is what we would most likely look at if we look back to March of 2020. Going forward, you could do an hourly pay increase, a percentage increase. It could be a lump sum per pay period, like a monthly allotment, or even a one-time payment going forward. There are just different options that you have. But the statement at the bottom, the monies must be paid for work that has already been performed. So it can't be future payments or for work that will happen in the future. So different options that we have talked about. The first bullet is holiday pay and compensatory time, or compensatory pay. So you've heard challenges at emergency services, their staff accrue holiday time. So if you work on a holiday, you get paid for work in the holiday, and then you bank the holiday hours to take it a later time. But honestly, they just can't take the time. They've been so busy and short-staffed, they're banking these holiday hours. Compensatory time, the same with social services. The county doesn't pay overtime to any department except emergency services. So social workers that are working overtime are banking comp time hours, which they can't take right now. So one way to recognize them, and they all seem pretty encouraged by it, were the department heads, the staff, not, not, don't know about this, but to pay out a certain amount of holiday pay and compensatory time. Leave some time in there, maybe a small bank, 40 hours, but pay anything over that. We are also looking at doing the premium pay for essential employees, and that would be going forward or retroactively, if we do a lump sum payment, and then recognize them again going forward. We've got details to iron out on this, but these are just options we're considering. At emergency services, night shift differential pay for those staff that work the 12-hour evening shifts versus the daytime shifts. And then also at emergency services, reclassification of a few positions. They have an emergency intake specialist that only answers like one line. And if they can have those positions reclassified to full telecommunications in the 911 center, that would be more attractive, because what ends up happening is those staff are trained on the one line, but they're trained across the board. But then they don't get to move up to do the full telecommunicator duties because there's no job opening. So they, excuse, again, these are options that we are looking at. And we're going to be evaluating this and pulling data together over the next month, and then come back to you with some final options.
Do you know how many potential employees would come under essential workers?
No, sir, I don't. I've got them all on different spreadsheets.
Well, I mean, for example, like the sheriff, is everybody in the sheriff's department selected positions?
That's a very good point. It is selected positions, because they have to meet these guidelines of the American Rescue Plan, that face-to-face. And you see, it says regular, and I don't want to say this 100%, but I'm thinking somewhere I've read the majority of their time, like 50% or more, but don't hold me to that. So they're looking at maybe the patrol deputies, detectives that go into homes, detention officers, but not all staff, social workers that go into homes. But we haven't ironed all of that out, because we're still reading and reading the US Treasury guidelines to make sure we understand.
Are you far enough of those options, have you focused on one or two? As a, as a best method, best practice?
Probably one and two, one and two or...
Well, we probably need to look at several of these. You've got several different issues here, and you might have to target certain compensation issues to try to take care of certain problems.
I think of what you're trying to say, Chairman, is be patient.
Thank you.
But we, we would need to set aside or allocate some of our ARC money. That's where, that's where it comes from to do this.
For that pieces of it that we do recommend that would qualify, then, you know, we would be asking to use ARC funds for that. And if there's solutions that won't qualify for ARC funds, we'll look at other options.
And we used all of our CARES Act money last year for the similar kind of compensation.
Well, it's not similar. We didn't do premium pay or anything. We used it to cover salaries.
But we, we used all that money.
That money was gone as of June 30th, yes.
So just to clarify, so that money wasn't used to increase any benefits or pay or anything? It was just to cover the salary?
That's right.
We didn't hire anybody with that money either, did we?
We hired some folks to do some cleaning, we hired some ambassadors. And so we did have a few positions that we felt were absolutely necessary to make sure that public health and safety was met.
All right.
So what, what, I mean, I know Darrell asked for a number, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, asked for a number. This is a, I mean, there's, so departments that are affected? So social services, sheriff's department, EMS?
And sheriff's office, looking at our four biggest departments.
Okay, th- those are the ones that are affected?
When I read the guidance, also housekeeping staff, because they touch things. So yes, what we've been talking about is in other departments, because they can put things in place where they've been able to limit their interaction and exposure to people, whether it's doing the curbside service, having the Plexiglas, so they can mitigate their interaction with the public. But some of these, some of our other positions can't mitigate that interaction as much.
Yeah. How about the, the courts, the courts go up every day. Are they essential, if they're a bailiff, or they're Tracy's folks that are in court?
Yes, those would be. Definitely the social workers that are in court.
So were there any departments like, which I don't know if you can follow that number, were there any departments in the county that, that receive like a, a retroactive, like hazard bonus or something through COVID monies or anything that, you know, got a, some kind of extra dollars at the end of the year to their salary or anything?
No, we haven't done any premium pays.
Not that we've...
Premium pay, okay, we'll look into that anyway.
We've not done anything.
Of course, I guess there's a lot of being patient here as far as where you are on this. But this screen that you're on right now, so, and I think, I like Tracy's example of James. So let's just take James from, whatever, the sheriff's department. Just picking on somebody. So James back there from the sheriff's department, who's a bailiff that works in the courthouse, so probably there's some, might fall in this criteria. So he's working now, you know, and everybody's really strapped, and people are out for COVID and different things. And so he's working some extra hours, which he's banking as comp time or holiday pay.
Holiday pay.
He's banking those hours.
Right.
So he's got hours that he's building up. But really, because everybody's so short-staffed, he can't take any of those days and take advantage of that, because he's working all the time. So, so in this plan, would you let him open up that pool of holidays and say, okay, we'll just go ahead and pay you for two of those days in your next paycheck? Or would we pay him for a couple of days and he keeps his holiday days? So when he retires, he gets to leave a month early, you know, that usually works?
Holiday time will, is always paid out. So you, you can bank them up for a certain amount of time, but they don't roll into sick leave or anything. He's always going to be paid for that. What we're thinking about is maybe keeping a bank of 40 hours, so that if an employee does want to use some of that time later, they'll have the 40 hours, but we would pay out anything above that. Does that answer your question?
Well, I guess this is a new pool of money. The answer is, we're just going to pay him for some holiday days, and he still keeps his holiday days.
If they have...
We're not letting him dip into the holiday days and take them early.
Well, the problem is they can't...
Or pay out.
They can't take them out. You know, the turnover in departments, the workload and everything else is keeping them from taking it. So they have not been compensated for the hours that they've worked. And so we want to try to take a look at that and see if we can compensate. Instead of them taking the time off, we just go ahead and pay them so that they've been compensated for that time. Otherwise, it's going to sit there and accumulate and accumulate and accumulate, and we just want to get a handle on it before it gets to be too much.
Well, I guess you have a number for how much of the CARES Act money went for this type of compensation?
Well, we didn't use it for this type of compensation, we used it to cover...
But it was, it was COVID-related expense?
Yeah, if we're going to get back to what we saved for, you know, it was maybe a couple million that we used to cover salaries. But, you know, some of that was for the folks that we, we hired temporarily to do the cleanings and, and some of those other functions that we felt that needed to be added. Ambassadors at the courthouse, those types of things.
We had about five...
I was thinking about that one, so, well, anyway, we can talk about it at the next meeting, whatever. I was like, you know, but like, somebody, it's not really accurate to say they haven't been compensated for the hours they're working, because they work 50 hours, they get paid for 50 hours.
No, they haven't been paid the 50 hours.
They haven't been paid 50 hours.
Any of this, any of this holiday time...
Five extra hours, I'm not getting paid for those hours. My paycheck's only got 40 on it, and I'm getting those when I retire.
Our policy is, you know, that they wouldn't get paid for the holiday hours, that usually gets banked.
Holiday hours get banked, and comp time hours are on the books that you can take the time later. Does that make sense? Okay.
Well, I'm sure we're going to hear more about this.
Oh, yes, sir. Will said this, this is priority over the next couple of weeks to get some numbers pulled together.
We'll have a number in a couple of weeks when we start.
That's why we didn't have anything tonight. We wanted to let you, let you know that we were working on this, but we don't have numbers yet, so we don't have any clear recommendations yet.
I think we're having another meeting on Sep, on October the 19th at 5 o'clock to take up the ARC money process again.
Okay.
David, Nina, and Helen, we'll have a meeting about a week before that to try to prioritize some things. All right, any other comments? Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay, Amy. We have a tax income and financing arrangement for Uwari Charter.
Okay, you may remember, we have done this once before. So it's a little unusual, but Uwari Charter Academy is expanding their high school and constructing a trades building at the current middle school site. In order to do that, they're pursuing the use of tax-exempt financing through the issuance of public finance authority education revenue bonds. And one of the IRS requirements for them is that they go through a process that is... And one of the IRS requirements for them is that they go through a process that is laid out in TEFRA, which is the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act. One of the requirements of that act was that a hearing be held by the county, by a hearing officer authorized by the county, which the last time this came up, this board authorized me as the hearing officer to do that. We held a hearing today about the issuance of these bonds. It was duly advertised. People were able to submit their views ahead of time in writing if they wanted to or show up and submit them orally at the hearing. I received no comments, not, no comments beforehand and no comments at the hearing. No, no one showed up except URE Charter, so, and they did not comment. I am reporting those comments to you, and then you have a resolution in your packet. Now, when you look at this resolution, it indicates your approval as the local government, where the improvements are located, of the issuance of the bonds and the financing of the project by URE Charter in this manner. But note that, in granting that, you are not making any representation whatsoever to the purchasers of the bonds. You're making no recommendation, no representation as to the creditworthiness of URE nor to the economic feasibility of the project. You are not endorsing the project, and you are not obligating the county in any manner whatsoever. This is just something that is required by the IRS in order for URE to proceed with tax-exempt financing. So you have the resolution. If you have questions about the process, I will do my best to answer those. And Sharon Castelli is here if you have questions about the project.
But doesn't it totally imply that we, we're telling the bond buyer, this is a good deal?
Well, if you read it, it specifically says in your resolution that you're not saying that. Like, your resolution specifically says that you are not saying that. If you look at the number two, section two on the resolution.
I got it, yeah. All right. Any questions of Amy? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for URE Charter, Charter of TEFRA.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Further discussion, questions? All those in favor will say aye. Aye, opposed, no? Thank you very much, Amy.
Good explanation.
All right. The next item is, is the meeting schedule for next year. The only question we had, it shows that July 4th is on Monday, so we'd meet on Tuesday, the 5th. Does anybody have an issue with that? That maybe we would move that till the following Monday, the 11th, or? That, that's the only question.
Seems like a good idea, that 11th, they had to kick around there.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Oh, what? 11th?
Yeah. No, I'm saying to change.
Yeah, I'm good with, I would like to see, yeah, I would be in favor of the 11th.
We have done that, we have done that in the past.
Is that good with you?
To get it out of the week of the 4th. Well, I know a lot of the.
I'll, I'll be here whenever y'all want.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if you call me back on the 5th, I'll be here the 5th.
Anybody have a problem with moving July to July, Monday, July 11th? Then I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the schedule to reflect that July 11th date. Have a, have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Those in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? And it's done. The next is, set our meeting, annual meeting with the Randolph County School Board, January the 10th. I have a motion.
Make the motion that we set the annual special joint meeting with the Randolph County School Board of Education for January 10th, 2022.
Thank you. Have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor, aye?
Back there, I was going to ask him, is that, were you okay to make that your happiest day of the year?
Say aye, favor, aye, aye, opposed, no? All right. County manager, Hal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to introduce Chelsea Butler, who's sitting back there next beside Tara. She's our communications specialist. And what Chelsea is working on in tonight's meeting is a perfect example of all the different issues that come before this Board of Commissioners. And she's working on our website with our IT department to make that more user-friendly, but also to get, be able to get information out to the public in a concise way so they don't have to read the tons of paperwork that's in an agenda, and let them know what the issues are that are confronting the county. And Chelsea's working on that right now. So I, I expect sometime in the next week, we'll have a new, our website will be updated and some new ways to communicate with the public to provide them the information that they need as, as a community will, will be on that website. Chelsea's also looking at and exploring some ways to use video, video communications with, with the public, with its commissioners, department heads, or whoever talking about current issues of the day. So a lot of good, exciting things are, are happening in our ability to communicate with our citizens. Welcome, Chelsea.
Good to have you, Chelsea. Chelsea came, came over to us from the Chamber of Commerce, and glad to have you with us.
And that, that position is what called what? Communications specialist?
All right. Any commissioner updates? And I know, we have some upcoming board term, term expirations. I also wanted to add, George Largarella was a board member, a board member at Randolph Community College. He followed Jerry Tillman, Fred Meredith, and then George. So that seat has been coming. I'll, I'll have a name, I think, actually, it will come from Dr. Shackelford, probably, on our consent agenda. So that, that will be on our November agenda. I'll send you some more on that. All right. Any other business? We're going to have a closed session. I would say this has to do with economic development. And there will be no, no decision, no business conducted at the conclusion of the public, of the closed session. Do I have a motion? David, you got it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter to closed session pursuant to North County General Statute 143-318.1184 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including the agreement on tentative lists of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye? Aye. And we are in closed session. Thank all of you tonight.